All right, good evening, everyone. We will call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. Great to see everyone on this snowy evening, those of you who were able to make it in. First things first, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to take notes.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded that approved the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? And about Eric. That will bring us to a special presentation tonight. We are glad to have with us Kate Knight, who is the Executive Director of the Farmington DDA. And so we're excited to have you, Kate, and as Sharon says, build a little bit more connectivity with this board and the DDA. Understand what you guys have going on and how we can further support. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. You've got the, well, this is like a really good team building exercise.
I'm just going to be able to scroll through your slides for you, yeah.
You just paste me, and if you feel like I need to wrap it up.
Oh, no, no, you're fine. Okay.
So thank you for having me. I'm excited to talk about it. Kathy Brown reached out a couple of weeks ago, and she had some questions about what the partnership looked like. We are a tax capture authority, the Downtown Development Authority. So what we are is downtown Farmington. The geographic boundary that you would consider downtown is probably about where our boundary falls. So we're a historic town center, we're walkable district, and we've been around for about 200 years. We just celebrated a bicentennial, so it's pretty amazing. And we host our very own downtown branch.
That's an excellent partnership.
We have a great partnership, and Maria, you look, recognize that first slide, which is really fun.
In Riley Park.
I mean, it's very compelling. We promote the library's programming in the downtown as part of our just monthly, what's happening downtown, the community. We all know they don't totally differentiate between who's doing what, when. It just feels good, and it's a very obvious and seamless partnership. I came in in 2017. I met the community at the Farmington Garage, and one of the warmest welcomes I had was Monica. Chakra Maria, her amazing shoes. They had a cherry detail. Wow, okay. And that's how our partnership began. So we work hard together. We're always talking about ways to collaborate. So we have this Cat West strategy. We'll talk about this being a mainstream operation here in our downtown, Downtown Development Authority. We believe in place-based community development. It's kind of our driving economic development thrust here. We believe placemaking has provided, has proved a successful policy for our district. We invest in public place infrastructure, and that's yielded significant return. Community support and private investment, we'll talk about that. So why we invest in public space, and this, I mean, we feel very strongly in the value of rehabilitating, reinvesting, redeveloping, and restoring historic characters downtown. But it's really running parallel to a conversation you're having with the library organization, why we invest in public space. It's a community asset, and now more than ever, it's important that we iterate, we reiterate our mission in that in our piece, we say downtown is for everyone. So we've been making some significant improvements. When you look downtown lately, they're designed to enhance the walkability and livability of Farmington, therefore thereby supporting property values within the community. So you've realized that in your own, your building assessment downtown. If you had no beautiful branch, just that corner would be of significant increased value in the last decade with the work that the DDA has done and all of our partnership together with the city. We also support the business environment by strengthening the downtown market. So if you've been to the farmer's market in downtown Farmington, I say it's from the best in the Midwest, and it's true. So it's a great destination and certainly good mixing pot. Our public-private partnership incentivizes investment. So I love this little slide montage. You can kind of see what's happening here. At the top is a bookstore. Hello, here's an independent bookstore in downtown Farmington.
It's neither Farmington nor Farmington Hills had before this place opened.
Not many do. And so my favorite bookstore. It's lovely. Has everyone been there?
I've been there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chuck Allora, the owner, is very really moved to partner with the library and schools, and he's, he's an excellent, excellent asset for downtown for sure. If you look at this view, this is, we're actually, we're on Grand River. We're sitting on Grand River, looking north at the bookstore there, painted freshly blue. On the left, you can see at the bottom is the new canal, Matneos Canal. You can see the former building just above it, and then the transformation of Apricot Lane in the bottom right, the former Sunflower Bakehouse. So that long-term lease retired, this fresh new used to be then. And those are our signals of new business, new investment, new interest, and new drop. We're pulling in visitors from a wider circle of geography than we have in past recent years, since I've been there almost a decade. So that's really great to hear different languages spoken in the street. People will hop out and look around, and we always ask them and ask them how we can help. So inevitably, they're looking for something that they haven't found before. Mason's Corner. This is the historic corner of downtown Farmington. And the road up into the left is Grand River, the road up into the right is Farmington Road. And this is sort of a bird's eye view of our historic Mason's Corner. It's a long-term lease partnership of 100 years with Mason's Lodge. That's a beautiful 1876 building. And if you remember what it looked like a few years ago, we've got a couple of pictures. This is what we imagined it to be. This is what it would have been like a year ago. We've got more detail. There it is. There it is. We have a lot packed into this restoration here. So this was a crowdfunding project. It's a statewide grant from the MBC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, based in Place. It's called My Place. A couple of years ago, we built Dine and Park. That was the very, their very first universally accessible public space that was funded through that grant program. We had more than $300 for Dine and Park, qualifying us for a $150,000 total loan matching grant. And we did it again the very next year. We're still in construction right now. We designed, funded, and built this. We had more than $400 for this, this corner. I had a gentleman in his 80s who asked to talk to me, came in to pay his water bill at the tax counter, and he said that he wanted to donate $5. He donated $5 to Dine and Park. He liked how it turned out so well. He would like to give me another five for Mason's Corner. I mean, change for 10. It just, it's really meaningful. We have donations ranging from $5 to $25,000. He's a dining partner. The Dine and Family Foundation came back for this one. And I think one of the points here is that a lot of these public spaces are being funded with the community and with really a lot of engagement and support for what we're doing. The top look is a few years ago outlook. It was a 30-year-old planter's bed. As it turns out, it's tough to gather on a big pile of Japanese staples. And we have coffee. Second stage is the second gravel there. And Ms. Maria did host Mike Mulligan and Steam Shovel. There was, we counted 80 attendees at that session. It was it was a road side of instruction. There were diggers in the distance, and it was kind of loud and dusty, but it was a hit. We knew that that would be a good place to gather people. The rendering down below is the same vantage point, and that's what we use to crowdfund. It's a vision of a gathering place with a focal piece of art. War visioning. At the top of this is our Grand Raven Festival. This is on our demoed site. It's a, it's a packed aggregate site, and you have seen our Raven. Edgar was purchased with funds from our Farmington Harvest Moon Festival in downtown Farmington. We use those proceeds from the people of the community drinking beers and listening to live music and pour it back into the district. People from Farmington had to drink a lot of beer to afford that piece of public art. His feathers are tires, and he is lovely. We removed him and installed him to keep with the magical spirit of that, that cultural program. So he means a lot to Farmington. He appeared in front of Daryl's Firestone this year. It was a 30-day installation. This is our pop-up strut. We have had, this is here was our B M, but we have, we usually have the Gabriel Brass Band come from Detroit. They lead us through what we call a pop-up strut through the town. It's pedestrian, one-by-one parade. We attract people off the patios, not at parking lots, out of wherever they've been shopping or doing business. We invite them to march along with us, and we stop and we play music. We base it back in Riley Park, and then they disperse after about an hour. It's really fun. So if you haven't, if you haven't tried it, I've written this is the second view with the swing we're funding toward, and then third view is the view from we've got grants here, and this is just a quick listing of them. A Main Street Oakland County Leasing Grant. About $150,000. The aforementioned My Place Public Spaces, many places match. 400 donors for that, and that's another $150,000. We have a piece of art we'll talk to you about, and that's very exciting too. The DDA and City of Farmington have funded that. That's special. And there she is, the Unity Torch. So brought to us through the generous patron, patron family, the Kikovas, is Allen, Georgia. They purchased the historic Farmington State Savings Bank, former Village Mall across the street. And then they've been great partners. You know, they really are the headline funders of the aforementioned Grand Raven Festival. They've really worked with our existing businesses, as they've been restoring storefronts of their property, and they have an appetite for redevelopment. They're restoring some residential units upstairs. They just, they change hands very quickly, and we need more. But this is a vision that they commissioned with the Nordin Brothers from Midtown Detroit. Eric and Israel Nordin created this Unity Torch. The first piece at the bottom left is being crammed into place. It will eventually have that second piece, and we anticipate that happening in the next two weeks. There's a natural gas line running to it. There's a little torch there. And it's, it's visible in the 360. So the idea is that it celebrates our resilience and creativity. It's dedicated to the people of Farmington, Bicentennial, and they donate it to downtown. So it's a gesture we've never had. Bicentennial Alley was another placemaking project we were able to complete. This is between Fresh Time Grocery Store and the former Fitness 19, but now it's Salam Suite. So we have lots of independent operators. It's a brand-new model business, occupying about 10,000 square feet. And if you see the, the first panel there in black says, "Welcome since 1824." That's a simplification of the last 200 years, and if you look at that timeline, there's a lot happening there. It's everything from Sojourner Truth speaking, Stop, very, very early days of Farmington, to Skip at the former bookstore. What was the bookstore? But there are, there are historic buildings there. There are people who have really contributed to the development of the last couple centuries. And this is a really neat timeline. It's not all obvious, all the, all the things that we're celebrating. Install those lights, and we invited the community to come celebrate it. So it really activated an alley. We did that very great. Art Park Promenade. This is a third space that we'll be doing in three years. So we are, we say every day we're hustling at the DPA. It is a lot of work. This is the view from Riley Park. Looking north toward in the distance, the Hillside Towns Development, which is a 52-town homecoming and development in the downtown district. It overlooks Cheyenne Park, and in some of the next couple of years, it will be connected with the ADA Accessible Path that we funded into Cheyenne Park, and the idea is that you'd be able to ride your bike from the downtown branch to this branch trail. That's not that big a vision, folks. We can, I mean, that's what needs to happen, and there needs to be that motorized connection. So this is a big connective piece, Art Park Promenade. We funded it. We didn't crowdfund it because I don't want to be run out of town just yet. That's, I feel like this is a big ask, but what we've heard is that we have these proof of execution projects where we're asking and then we're getting it done, which is really not typical of public projects. So whether it's creating an unrealistic expectation, we're going to run with it. I'm going to continue this momentum into '25 and '26. We're designing this right now. That piece down on the foreground on your left is an artist easel. There, that's by an artist who has pieces of the Michigan Legacy Park at Martha. That's sidewalk chalk. And if you, when you see a plan view of this, I have them in my office, but then just imagine, it's a connection between Riley Park and into the green spaces and communities north and into the hills. So on the north side is Thomas Street. Demoed two houses that the city had owned for a long time. And one was right on, I'm going to stack just directly north on Thomas Street. And there it is, in plan view. There's the schematic at the top. If you look at that sketch on the top, it's, it's a kind of landscape view, and on the right side, you can see some of the buildings that will be condos. And on the far right side, that fronts onto Grand River. So you can see it's a pretty short little stretch there. The park itself is just that left half. So beautiful plantings, trees, a little respite, places to stop. And it's rendered with about nine or 10, at least 10, 15 probably market tents. It's a 10 by 10 tent format. We envision that it would be able to host programming ranging from the farmer's market and arson's market to the Authors' Festival by Kickstarter and other, other community programs. It's really nicely considered. If you look at that second rendering, this is a vision with lots of art. These renderings show, I think, at least half a million dollars of public art, and we don't have that yet. We may be working on that for years, but I want to point out in particular the, the light, the glowing tubes in the, in the far distance there. The typically lights, the street lighting are budgeted in, and the furnishings will open up with a place to sit. But those tubes, I have a vision for a local business that's just starting up. It's a 501(c)(3) at Fired Infused on Grand River Avenue. And they're working with Corning in New York. They have a lot of really passionate followers right now. What if these tubes were a partnership between Fired Infused, our public art interests? We could bring the library into it, but maybe you're, each, each entity has a tube that they're blowing in a kiln and we're installing it downtown. This is what it would look like. This is what it could look like. I think we're worth it. This is one of my favorite things about 2024. We were in line for a while. It is the DIA PIPA mural program. And they call us, I think we got on, on the list I got a call in 2024 to ask if we were, it's still thinking about it, yes, and if we would maybe want to talk about 2025 or 2026. Wild to line these things up. And I said, you know, we're doing our bicentennial this year, and if you believe that we can get this done, I, I really believe it. And let's try. Let's do it. So we did. They want to be on a public space. And I think that we'll be talking about a fully key library in City Hall the next 10 years, so let's put it somewhere else. How about, how about the Pavilion at Riley Park? It just made sense. We did a lot of community engagement. We had about 140 survey respondents who provided themes and suggestions. There was one specific artist suggested from the community. It's anonymous suggestion. And it was Rick Malt. So he's a Detroit artist. He brought this brilliant, brilliant design, which is all about community and warmth. There's a lot of Farmington resonance with the imagery and the iconography and the herbs and seasons. We advocated for two, both murals. I like to think it's like a little freeze, like our own little river port in downtown downtown. They said, I think maybe just one. And I said, I thought you should have done that. It'd be like a one-two storyboard. And you did, you did two. That's our opening party on December 5th. We'd like to celebrate these things as soon as we open, because there's always going to be something to celebrate for the government. This is a pretty special installation. We can't wait to open up the next season at the farmer's market. We have more than 110,000 people visiting on Saturdays alone over 27 weeks with farmer's market. It is a regional destination. Public art. I mean, this is just another angle. This is the pop-up strut again. It was, this doesn't show the packed closed road on the Farmington Road. It was, it was a grand evening. The lower lap shows the framework for our swing. And those are two residents there and supporters of the arts and volunteers, Steve and Sarah. Yeah, they were instrumental in bringing that swing to downtown. So that component that they're sitting on, something very similar, will be suspended from the acacia tree of life stylized right there. So one of the reasons the art isn't completely installed right now during the winter. It's ready to go, but it is such a human attractor that we think it was locked to our own construction site. So that's very exciting to think about. I think there's a story on it.
I, I, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to do something. Yes, there.
A year-long campaign with the Bicentennial Task Force in the city. It's a really great way to to celebrate. We did a street pool banner with historic photos of downtown. We introduced it through the, the graphics through all of our programming. And it was just a nice background feel for all of the programming we host downtown, including the family fun at Riley Park. It's just a seamless year-long celebration. There's a beautiful video commemorating it. A beer was brewed, the 1824 ale. If you have no chance, it can still be found at downtown Gaurinado. And, you know, we've got a couple of renactors that are cutting in any of us with the mayor and county commissioner. Oh, I love this picture. This is another celebratory picture. We are a GAMS National Semi-Finalist. That's a great American Main Street award. We are one of the downtowns across the country to win this semifinal steps in stories of our downtown revitalization, of our commitment to this Main Street focus. And it's, it's a really strong volunteer push. I think we all could agree that Farmington has a very strong volunteer culture. And this is a celebration of it. Love this photo. More about the same. So, you know, it's been building toward this Riley Park, and that pavilion went in in 2005. 20 years ago, the people of Farmington have a vision to install a park in the middle of a parking lot. And I think we are familiar with those in our lives who complain always that there's never enough parking, but well, we know that. And what we know from visiting great places is that if you have reason to go there, you're going to make a way to get there, and parking is really not an issue. We have, our parking is free, and there's, there's lots of it. That Riley Park is, is for hosting regular visitations. So we're just about cast. It's an amazing amphitheater, and it's used night after night, every day after day. So we're thrilled, and we have our noon lunchtime series on Wednesday in the Bookmobile also. I mean, it's just I was giving a tour of downtown to prospective merchant. This is what I do often. And it's, it was the owner, Victor, one of the owners at Blueberry Brunch. And so we, we went downtown. It was a Wednesday. There was the ducklings were strutting by, a sequel file from Sunny Day Care. They had just been to the library. I'm not kidding. They go there, they go on a little trip every day, but they were coming to lunchbeats, and they were blowing bubbles, and families were having lunch. The book will be almost there. And what of Victor's comments was, this is real. Yeah, Victor, it's just Wednesday. But ultimately, they signed a lease, and if you go there on a Saturday, you're going to wait for an hour to get a reservation. So it's, it's really an exciting time, and it's, it's a story of pulling together the community. The bottom right there is Dine and Park. That was a cracked-up drive with some parking spaces. And we activated it. We closed it with streetscape. We made it universally accessible. Those are ADA-compliant furnishings. We host a series on Thursday nights, a little solo series. I have a photo of just a random night going in and seeing visitors using a wheelchair and a visitor using an able scooter with microphone, and that is powerful. That's powerful. Up, up top, there's a little patio scene. When we build sidewalks that are deeper, when we skinny down those roads and slow traffic, those are investments that really signal that we're a walkable community, and we have seen them noticeable uptick in pedestrian traffic into town. It's, it's possible that they're going to the syndicate. We look in the bottom left. This is a really terrific economic development tool that we have, and which one could get declassifying, a hot toddy, a cider, beer. And it's with support small business and meet your neighbor on the street. We opened it on New Year's Eve. It's still in COVID, and it was real heart and heart to see folks who hadn't seen each other in a long time. I'm sure you talked about it. But it's really, it's been truth that it's a great place to have a business, and it's a great place to support each other as a community, and it's still a success four years later.
It's never going to go.
It's never going to go away. It was a three-year experiment, and the legislature has I think we're going to go on forever. The Michigan Downtown Association is our peer organization, and they elected us the Organization of the Year. So Farmington Downtown is a group that they feel is doing some exemplary work. Now, we do have a pretty big team. That's a board of nine. We are a tiny staff of one, and there's Jess there with me in the circle, the red jacket. I say that she's my right-hand woman. That's kind of, she does a little bit of everything, and she's very can-do. She's very Farmington. But we have a team that volunteers. Do you remember John A. Bock up there in the top right? Librarians, you know the type. Just out there volunteering, working. But it's, it's a real group effort. We had more than 120 volunteers who officially signed up and put in thousands of hours. I'm not kidding. And it's supporting our programs, our events, our, you know, putting up greens before we put the ice cream cup, throwing bales of straw for Harvest Moon, pouring beer, greeting people, drink art on the ground. It is a pretty terrific organization. We can all be proud of. Oh, there's just more celebration there. That's the main event. We won an award there for the spirit of Main Street. If you look in there, there's Jess in the back row holding up a big phone check. We, we work with Main Street Oakland County. We're one of their 20 Main Street communities, or select level community. And we're a next-gen community. We're the only semifinalist in many years for the GAMS Award. Previous winners include Firdale in 2011. Remember when Firdale, before it was Firdale? That was a big story in 2011, and then Rochester won it in 2013. And we're a semifinalist this year. I think we have no choice but to try again next year. Do we just have more plans, more good things? So those are all the downtowns from Oakland County. Oh, I love this picture. I know we, we have mixed memories about this. We kept access open to every business on Farmington Road, but we were we underestimated the people's unwillingness to be in it was a long haul. We ran out of concrete a couple of times. It was a long haul. We ran out of concrete a couple of times. Here's a little rule, rule. Do not make, uh, a streetscape project happen when, um, similarly Gordy Hall Bridge is called. Um, so we. People would say, really? You're out of concrete? I'd say you're out of concrete today. You know, we're making, we're making it all of the day. Currently with this project was the restoration of that beneath building. And do you remember the, the stairway that went downstairs? The transformation of that historic building in the streetscape is, I don't even think it's a once in a generation opportunity for those things to align. I think it's a once in a century thing. Um, and the fact that we didn't break any of those beautiful new windows is something I just, actually I shouldn't even talk out long about. Um, that was a three million dollar project. We split it with the city. Um, they get a much better deal on a bond and pay them debt service and, um, and we frankly handle a lot of the design and oversight. They're willing to let our little office, uh, step in because we are interested. If there's a question on that streetscape, a design change, a problem, um, I, I ran over there, um, once a day. It was, it's terrific. It's, it's very, it's tangible. It's, it's a high-impact industrial improvement. Uh, it was regionally funded, um, but well, it was federal tap grant of a million dollars. Simcon came in with half a million dollars. Um, and we won several awards for it, but it's in that three million dollars. We've seen ten million dollars of private investment. And when we do these things, that's the kind of investment we want to see in the next decade or fifteen years. We've seen it concurrently. We have another ten million dollars planned for the next probably twenty-five months of that. Um, and that's with mixed use residential, um, and new investment. So it's, it's a great story for downtown. Grants. It's, grants are kind of boring to list out, but here they are. Uh, I won't, I won't drag you all the way through them, but, um, they're a really important piece of what our organization does. Um, we're always looking to seed grants to match, you know, we'll, we'll use, we'll throw something, uh, down to match and write a grant and win it and use that to seed another application for another grant. So, um, stacking, uh, is how we got one of the botanical murals downtown. Um, I like to talk about the match on me and Moonlight Spirits. If you're following us on Instagram. Um, we have a new distillery tasting room coming in. Joe Lorden from Moonlight Spirits. He came in, uh, he took his tour, uh, walking through the park. Dine and Park was under construction. I shouldn't have the fire tables were going to work. Uh, we walked by the new Heights Brewery. The brewer walked through his own construction site and through the front of the building and said, you have to go. And we walked around, turned the corner, went down to ground control and James at ground control, who's also on my board, uh, walked out from a busy counter and pit lane was packed on Wednesday, two P M. And he said, come here, you have to join us. This is, this is the right place to invest. He distills in Ferndale. He lives in mine township, west in between. We wrote a grant for him. It's a match on me, uh, grants, twenty-five thousand dollar grant. So we won. He's building his tasting room across the street from Pocket Park. And he'll be part of the social district. Yesterday on Instagram, he posted his Oakland County Health Department, uh, passing certificate with a small sample of whiskey and a bottle and a view out into downtown and streetscape. So, um, he thinks he'll open April. So, yay. But we're really excited about that. He's, he's adding to the community. And we've had, um, like eight small businesses open in the last year. So, um, it's a really nice mix. Everything from dresses to whiskey to books. I mean, things are moving out downtown. This is a very quick hit. I, I saw this graphic of a phone and I thought, oh, no, really? But this is where we find our information. This is where it's, uh, it's most readily accessible. And you know that we are reaching people um, on this device. We reached almost half a million people last year. We have a global, um, creativity guy who's on our volunteer corps and he cannot believe a reach. It is organic, folks. We, um, we don't really boost much. Occasionally we do, um, throw, you know, fifty dollars on something to reach, but, um, we have a, a growing um, following on, on Facebook and we're trying to get there. And Instagram, uh, we've doubled that in the last couple of years, but, uh, we boosted a lot or we, we drew our audience a lot over last year. Um, and that includes library programming. That includes imagery from, uh, kids reading at the park. Um, our, uh, Victorian volunteers, um, who are walking around doing Poe recitations, strength, Grand Raven Festival. You know, terrific programs with library, um, read along pages. You know, what, what year did these, although the book that, um, we did a couple of years ago, the Nigerian author that had those, there were pages in the storefronts downtown. So it was.
Oh, oh, um, yes, it was the author who did that was for me. It's, it's. In that thing, was it, was it the Saturday one where she, I'll find it.
Yeah, I mean, it was wonderful. No, we had it up for a summer.
Yeah.
It was great.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, it wasn't the soup one. It was just another way to visit downtown and, and, uh, you know, stewardship in the community. These businesses were happy to host that. It's, uh, it's a terrific program. Build a capacity with the cultural programming. This is Dine and Park. I mean, a random, uh, very cold spring day. We had a warm snap and, and all of a sudden, uh, people went over and used the park. And we, we've seen that. I had a carpenter come to swap out a tabletop. It wasn't performing quite the way we'd like to. It too. And he called me on Saturday and said, I, I was here eating out and all the tables were taken. Um, and I, you know, I came back at ten and I came back at twelve. What do you think I should do? So I know Carl, just, we, we'd want to schedule a different time. People were using the, the park. He was kind of surprised, but we are not. Um, it just feels good and it's, um, it's kind of a little, uh, spot of rest. But there's some public art there. If you look, um, at that sail-shaped, uh, it's called City Moon. It was paid in pardon, proceeds of pardon.
Was it Saturday?
Just thank you all.
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay. So what's this soup one? Okay.
So a new cultural program that we've introduced, including, um, we, we are a tiny little staff, but the, um, the best way for us to grow is if we have sponsorship again to volunteers. So, uh, we did build some more programming capacity. We moved Farmington fit. Uh, we've been wanting to do this for years and we can't fit anything else in at Riley Park. So this is the activation of Memorial Park, which is, um, right across the street, really from the library and City Hall on Grand Road. So the imagery of there, people are just relaxing. It was free to the public. Uh, produced by our downtown, uh, merchants who are wellness folks. James McLaughlin, who owns Ground Control Coffee Roasters, really single-handedly produced that. That's Alana from Bodai Yoga. And, uh, you probably know half of the people in that, in those poses, but, um, you're welcome to join us. It's on Mondays this year because James tells us that, uh, Monday is the best day. You haven't lost your momentum for the week. So Monday's at six. Join us again. Dine and Park Music Series was the way to activate that little podcast. So we're, uh, we're spreading that back a little bit on Thursday nights. It's a solo series and it cools down a little bit. Gives people a chance to, uh, bike and walk into town and join us. We launched a pride campaign in June. Uh, we will continue that this year. Downtown is for everyone. We have a welcoming campaign and there's a, uh, two hundred symbol there for our bicentennial. Um, and then we, we started that with the bicentennial. We've been wanting to do something. It's, it's, uh, very easy and low-key. We provide the, the artwork and then we print an initial run for anyone who wants it. And then, um, our merchants can download it, um, to, to do whatever they want with it. So we have, um, uh, Kitchen Creations, Sorrela Cake Studio. I didn't think they'd be into a giant flag. We have lots of decals throughout town. And, um, fired up again in June. Snap house. Um, twenty twenty-four forward. Look at that photo at the top. Who is that mass library?
John.
It's John, yeah. Isn't that terrific?
I know. It's my favorite photo of her.
It's so beautiful. And, um, everything about it, it's in front of our Farmington Civic Theater. She's clearly, um, entertaining. She's all reading to a crowd with her lantern and her Poe. And she's just elegant. Um, this was a photo that ran, uh, a nice photo essay in the Observer Central. Can we use it many times? But it's an example of what it's now. We call it a long-running community event. It's been five years this year with Grand Raven Festival. Um, you see the Farmers Market on the top left, great partnership there. Um, and certainly lots of, uh, people who need to help with that. That's, uh, rhythms in Riley Park. Um, we have a really active dance floor with the under eight crowd. Um, Connect Four is part of our programming there. And then, um, I call this Eddie Road, but this is a little snapshot from our pop-up strut in October. So I hope you have a chance to come and visit when we have our light installation. It was commissioned by the Farmington, uh, Bicentennial Task Force in Gabriel Hall. Freski, uh, award-winning artist from Detroit, designed the story and, um, my only regret. Farmington Red Six. Thank you, Maria. You're right. Uh, can't leave that out. But we closed the street. And, um, it was, it was magical. People sat crisscross applesauce in the street and, um, um, my only regret is that we couldn't do, that we didn't do it again. That was, we have, to see it was to believe it. And even to see a recording of it was, um, it's truly, truly amazing. So, uh, it was very Farmington. It was very, um, it was very special. It's a, a big, um, statement about arts and community in, in our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the time that you spent and all of the efforts. Um, I can certainly say I spend more time downtown now, uh, due to some of the new coming businesses that have arrived. Dear Board Music, one of my favorites. Um, and those kind of places really are, um, draws, you know, regionally. And so thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll turn it over to the table and see if there are any questions for Kate.
Uh, I have a question. If someone wanted to stay connected with all the events in Farmington, um, is that, is there a website for that or would be the best way? Thank you, Sharon. We have a website called, uh, Downtown Farmington Network. Uh, so we, we update there. The, the hottest topic is always that little black box on the cover page. Um, and it's, it's whatever's happening right then. Um, it's our calendar of events or, or events that may be coming up. Um, our next big series will be openly designed out in April, but we'll be launching our concert series. Most will start, um, after our agreement, which is the first weekend in June. So it's the first juried art event of the season, uh, in Southeast Michigan and we welcome more than fifty thousand people into town. We produce that with Farmington House. Uh, to see Farmington House. Um, but you can find us on social media. If you're on social media, we're on Facebook and Instagram and we message heavily through that. But certainly we have, um, our website. We also have a listener and if you're interested, you can do that through the website. Um, we'll email you. It's not too much, but, uh, news articles and, uh, just updates on construction events and opportunities to volunteer. Love to have you. We have an open, uh, board listing of, of posting right now. So, uh, we're taking the applications and we're, uh, we're seeing a lot of really nice applications disturbed.
Awesome. Okay. How can we, as a board, both as an organization and individuals, support you?
Thank you. Thank you. I love that. I think we just keep on what we're doing. Um, we, when I say we have a strong partnership, I absolutely need it. Um, Maria has myself, we, uh, yell to each other in the street. Um, I see her walking early, early in the morning and, I mean, we, uh, uh, we're kind of.
When I see something, I'll text that. I just love the sights.
Yes. Um, yeah, we, we partner. We wanna know, um, so, you know, we can always check each other's websites, but it's also just a good call and, and talk in person. Whether it's a book sale at Riley Park, uh, or a fun in Farmington program, or we're trying to figure out how to change the music in the, in the pavilion. Um, our assets are your assets and, um, it's just such a, such a job. It's such a, it's a terrific thing to library in our downtown. I think it's like Kathy. Kathy, maybe get to talk about our recommended reading for twenty twenty-five and we're on the phone, but, um, I, um, I did mention that when I applied for this job, I went next to a girl at library card before I found out. I knew, I knew that this is community. That was, it was gonna be, uh, something beautiful. Um, and I, I think having a library downtown is, um, it's walkable. It's a destination and I think that, um, I've, you know, I've seen some of the visions that are under consideration and I, I will support that however we can. I think anytime we have public space that's accessible to everyone that we can program together, that's, um, that's welcoming. Um, it's a great way to, um, keep our families here and new talent and, and old talent. Um, Michigan is, uh, we have to figure out a way to, um, move forward and I think that's the way, holiday communities. So, um, you know, we are, we're a tax capture district. We, we, um, we work in partnership, um, with an, an annual capture from the library, among many other taxing authorities, region, library, current within metro parks, a whole, a whole host of, um, entities that contribute a, um, small dollar amount. It's never small. Are you, that's not the right way to describe it, but together, it's because we're doing it together that we're able to compound the effort. Um, we have to, I think, strategize together and build a community that we want to have.
I just want to say Kate does an amazing job and I'm happy that she's next to me together.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, really appreciate you sharing with us and, um, I think as we've discussed, we'll make this at least an annual event. Um, or we come together and do something along these lines. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, Si. I would like to throw out there, I mean, Maria, you could do it too, if you wanted to coordinate it too. I love walking tours, uh, and I, I do it with volunteers. I do it with, um, you know, a walking group from the Farmers Market every so often through Beaumont, when you're walking out, developers. Um, but it's fun to know what's happening. And if you feel like that's something that would benefit the library board, let's do it.
Absolutely.
You can, you can get, uh, you can get whatever you want in your cup. And it would be a way to support small business. Um, and we can walk through and, um, I can tell you about some things that we have and works. The Halloween line. You'll see someone you know. We have a wine bar coming.
A new restaurant.
Another, I guess, Bruce Ash is coming in.
To our quickly join us, the field trips. There are several places that we need to visit. So thank you.
Thank you very much. If you have any time questions, I'm gonna leave a little stack for it. I think you probably, but.
All right. Um, so I think we all discussed, uh, previously our desire to really have two opportunities for public comment. And we did have a member of the public with us today. Um, so I'd like to extend that opportunity to, uh, our public. You're with us, Dr. Sophie. At the start of the agenda, unless you would prefer to wait to the end at the, uh, scheduled public comment we have. Okay, I think we allow you to present now and, uh, yeah, you have three minutes to address the board. Please tell everyone who you are, where you're from, where you live, and, um, then you'll have your three-minute comment.
Is there any way that I can link up to the?
Unfortunately not, because we're broadcasting the meeting out to the public.
So my name is Dr. Soshi. Um, thank you for all your work at the library. Um, I just want to explain very quickly. I only have three minutes, but basically the history of Palestine is that we've always been there. It's our ancestral homeland. That's where we live. That's the land that we love. And in nineteen forty-eight, uh, Britain, uh, colonized the Middle East. They cut up Iraq, Syria, Jordan, Palestine. They said they were gonna create a colony in Palestine and call it Israel. And they started bringing in Europeans. And so it became a colonial project of the United States. Uh, as you must have heard a few days ago, Donald Trump said that Gaza was going to belong to him. Uh, and, uh, we see, so Israel's not really a, a country. It's not. And we see, so Israel's not really a country, it's not an ethnicity, there is no ethnicity called Israel. It's a military occupation of Palestine. And so people who have no ancestral ties to Palestine come in from Europe, come in from the United States. And they steal our houses, they steal our land at gunpoint and they make it their own. And they kill us, they murder us, they rape us, so that they can create their military occupation. And what I wanted to show you, because it's always more. Something that you would understand better if you can see it. This is a woman in the West Bank. You can see the Israelis trying to steal her house at gunpoint. A bunch of Israeli soldiers, they have their rifles and she's fighting them back. She's screaming, get out, get out, this is my house. This is another video of a. This is a video of a neighborhood in the West Bank. There are cages, caged walls all over the West Bank, all over different neighborhoods, even all over different houses. So the children cannot come back to their house after school has ended. Because the Israeli military is not allowing them to go through the gate. So some of the children are trying to climb over the gate, the mothers are pleading, please let our kids in, please let our kids in. Soldiers aren't letting them in. What apartheid means is we're not allowed to walk on the same streets as Israelis. We're not allowed to go to the same schools, we're not allowed to have the same jobs, they take our houses, we're not even allowed to drink the same water. So we have to drink our water from barrels that we leave outside to catch from the rain. And it's also illegal for us to catch rainwater. And I showed some other videos and I'm just going to describe it of bulldozers coming to our houses and destroying our houses in the West Bank. They constantly bring bulldozers and destroy our houses. And in one of the videos, you can see the bulldozer destroying the barrel of water. So the reason that I bring this up is because on December first, the library held an event. Which gave legitimacy to the Israeli occupation. And it was really poignant that they did that at a time when Israel is committing genocide. Two hundred thousand people were killed in Gaza alone. Since that time, hundreds of people have been killed in the West Bank. But in Gaza alone, two hundred thousand people, including over twenty thousand children. There are orphans now, about fifty thousand children. Can you imagine just walking around at seven years old, trying to take care of your three-year-old sister? There are videos of these children begging for food for their sisters, combing their sister's hair. They've become little mothers because their parents have been killed. And so it really hurt when the library gave legitimacy to the Israeli occupation of our homeland. Especially in Farmington Hills, where there are a lot of Palestinian refugees and displaced people. And there are a lot of Arab and there are a lot of Muslim people here. And so what we would like to ask from you is that we have in our community, somebody named Dr. Ismail Nwud. He's a necro survivor. In nineteen sixty-nine, he was forced out of his house at gunpoint. His entire village was forced out at gunpoint. And he is a treasure because he can tell you the whole history of Palestine and he can do it through a first eyewitness. The same way, you know, we lost a couple of weeks ago, I don't know if you know, this, this man named Renee. He was a Holocaust survivor and he stood for Palestine. And he fought so hard for Palestine and he actually, on his deathbed, he said, I'm going to get better and I'm going to keep fighting for Palestine. And he was a Holocaust survivor and there are lots of Holocaust survivors who say this is also a Holocaust. And Renee said that and he actually stood in front of City Hall, just a, you know, a few minutes from his library. And he gave a talk to everyone in front of City Hall. He said, I'm a Holocaust survivor and this is a Holocaust. We've lost Renee, you know, may God bless him. And I really think that we should also honor that we have for now, somebody who's also surviving the necro. We should give him a chance to give a lecture to the community in the library, that's what we're asking from you. So I, I hope that you can give this, this, some thought to this arrangement and please allow him to give a lecture. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sophie, really appreciate you sharing with us. I know I've had some dialogue with you and take that into consideration for sure and we'll hopefully have continued dialogue with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That will bring us to minutes. We don't have four tonight, so I'm going to pass that, I denied it and defer that until next month's meeting. That will bring us to the treasurer's report. Kathy, do you have anything to share or do you want to defer? Okay, any other items from the treasurer though? All right. That will bring us to the friends of the library report and so Stacy, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you so much, a few things. We're going back to the drawing board actually Rebecca Brown is because the author that we had come in in October as left the country and. I don't think it was us. I just, I mean disappointingly for us and of course, you know, he feels, he feels right for himself. So Rebecca's working on that and she has been historically incredible at this, so I trust you guys on finding someone. The other thing that we're looking at in light of the end of your donations that our membership renewal. Right in and some of the, some of the ways that donations work and with the library and the library board are doing in terms of. Stamping the library. Is that we are looking at how we can contribute to some of the projects that have been. Put on the drawing board for the library. And we don't have a motion on the floor, but we do have a consideration of a motion to talk about funding the outdoor space here at Farmington Hills. With a forty-five thousand dollar commitment from our endowment fund as well as forty-five thousand in fundraising. And Sharon, I have to thank you for this because your discussion about it at the last board meeting about what we could do. And what the friends are doing right now is really reconsidering how we approach fundraising. And how we approach some of the things that we do. So your seller staff and their ideas, we're looking at doing some things that are going to. Raise involvement and commitment for the friends in, in the library as well. So I hope to have more for you at the March Library Board of Trustees meeting. But I, I do think it was, we're looking at a. Reconceptualization about how the friends approach fundraising, how we approach membership and what we are going to do in the future to involve more. And different levels of the community and more in different groups in terms of what, how they can. Involve themselves and feel committed to community through the library. Oh, and we're having a book sale at the end of April. April twenty fifth through the twenty seventh, that's been a big book sale. And for those of you who are in the know about book sales, it's also the same weekend that the Bookstock Book Sale at the World Park Place starts. And we found that it's kind of like, um, a rising tide lifts all boats, the more you know, the more involved you are with it. So we were hopeful for, for. Well, you know, we, we have had some really interesting donations, um, first edition of. In Cold Blood by Truman Capote. This is why I tell us to accept all the donations, because otherwise this wouldn't have come through. And so I don't want to undercut anybody, but I do think that if you go to a book sale, you should be able to get a deal. And then the library or the friends, we should get a little bit of money. So we're looking at non-auctionable pricing points for a lot of this stuff. I started an eBay store and it's been going incredibly well from the pictures that I take in my living room and I post on the website. And I, you know, it's unbelievable because the things that sell, I think that I don't think they would sell and then. That happens, but there you go. So it's been really great and I have a lot of good ideas and we have, I think, some potential new. Library Friends Board members coming on who are going to help do it. And it was really inspiring to hear Kate talk because you can do so much without having to have a lot of people to do it. As long as you have the, the desire and drive to do it. All it takes is a little work.
Thanks Stacy, thank you so much. You know, listening to Kate was very inspiring and I think watching some of the projects that have come about downtown. It's just been awesome to see the community respond with the crowdfunding of these, these pocket parks and the Mason's Park. So Stacy, I think with some of the things you guys are thinking about with our outdoor space here, I think we have that same opportunity to involve the community. Which I think will certainly draw them to the space, you know, as we develop it out. So thank you for everything that you're doing. I'm looking forward to the book sale, hopefully I can get over here early and check out the LPs. Zero, okay, we might need to put out a call for LPs. But if not, I know Dear Boron Music puts their used LPs out on Sunday, if anybody's interested. But thank you Stacy. Any questions for Stacy?
You can just come to my basement. A DJ and I have a whole wall of milk crates like.
Is Mr. Seeger ready to clean that out?
He is, well, I'm ready to clean it out, so, because I'm not moving it.
Let, let me know, I'll be there.
Paces, thousands of albums.
That's impressive, yes, I will be there. All right, thank you Stacy. That will bring us to the director's report.
Okay, reminder, everybody, Marcus and your killer arts board meeting is at Farmington location. Those are reminder, also not a reminder again, none of the books is coming up. You maybe got an email from Rebecca and Sarah about reaching out or helping out at the event, say in April eleventh from seven to nine. They were also going to reach out to. Farmington Bible Schools and, oh, Friends, did you get an email? Based on your suggestion, thank you. And they were very excited to do that. Date of the Cities is coming up, it's a different format, Tuesday, April first, seven to eight thirty. So I don't know, take a chance.
It's a combined event that typically in the past has been at seven AM. So I personally am appreciative of the power.
Seven PM. Oh, oh, yeah. A little business expo before, four thirty to six thirty. And I think the library will have a table there. And then from five to six thirty is the VIP reception, which I believe you have to pay extra for. So you can talk to the mayors and the, you know, whoever, so yeah. But as soon as I see if the tickets are on sale, I'll let you know, you can tell me if you want to go. And so the Bosch, Bosch Grant is coming up for, we're going to go for it again. We are looking this time again to fund Udemy, the Fierro Code software, Seed Library, robot kits, laptops and a laptop dispensing system. So we'll see, kind of more like a self-serve type of thing. So I was contacted by a local artist who was frequent patron, who wanted to stop in to propose a piece of art. And I thought, I feel like I put that in there. Yeah. Yes, I told him that, you know, I did not make any promises, I just, but here's his. Instructions on it and his little design that he's thinking of. It's like twelve by sixteen pieces, you know, something either hanging from the ceiling or on the wall. I said I would present it. I need to go back because we're also could be moving walls and ceilings and so like, you know. I just want to throw this out there that this is out here.
Yeah, absolutely, it might be a good item for the facilities committee to take up.
Right, yeah, yeah. We have a barber shop window if you've been downtown to Farmington. It was display, it was installed on Monday, Thursday, is this our last week?
It needs to be taken down Tuesday morning.
Okay, yep, so the barber shop at. Our Seeds for Coffee Band is March ninth, it's a popular program, I expect a lot of people filling in that day.
Like last year, what, over two hundred?
I think so, yeah, so it's going to be a busy Sunday. Sally Campbell is officially announced to retirement. I know, we're all very sad about that, after forty years. Sally's last day will be June twenty seventh. Her position has been posted. And so we have two new staff members for Patron Services Department, Frances Trimble and Sarah Offerman. And we have a new Facilities Assistant, Christian Star. And then I also shared with you the ADA assessment through, what take you, you know, just to leave. No surprises. One for Farmington and one for Farmington Hills. Obviously the bathrooms, we're out there. And some of the shelving is two posts together, but. That's something we can, you know, think about when. Start looking at spaces and whatever, because you can't really just move the shopping right out, so, yeah, so. But something to look at is we look at spaces to go for. Other things, we did receive a grant, we got notification that we received a grant today from Michigan Humanities. It's a big art and humanities touring grant for nine hundred dollars. And it was to bring in a mingle dancers. For our program and they're called Companeros de Plamengo. So I don't know when that's planned, but Sherry went to the grant fair and had asked for it, so Sherry got us. It was Arts and Humanities Touring Grants. The Michigan Humanities couple. Okay, you might have gotten a message from Sarah today also, if you checked her email about the trustee spotlight and questions to answer. And then Stevens. Notice to the community will be going out as soon as you okay, so it's, what do you call it?
She, she labeled it as a press release.
That's it, that's it, I couldn't come up with a word, so that it's, that will be going out. A direct budget does need to be to you at the March meeting, so I'll put that presented. I also. Well, we'll talk about facilities, but. One other thing I want to. So you know the pavers out front? Just a little history on the paper. They're originally installed probably two thousand and two, two thousand and three, when the new building was, was, when this building was. So in two thousand and twelve, they were hazardous because they were all uneven and so, and, and they were no longer readable, which a lot of them are not now. So in spring of two thousand and thirteen, they changed the type of paper, it was apparently some kind of tile and now they're more concrete. And they fixed the walkway to a tune of over fifty-two thousand dollars. So the estimates for that time were anywhere from fifty-two thousand dollars to eighty-seven thousand dollars. So we're back in the same boat again, I'm just putting that out there, some can't, some we can't read, now they're not unstable at this point. When you're thinking about the master plan and in the entry way. What are you going to do? And I just want, and more importantly, is there an alternative to pavers, because people keep asking.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that is.
And see Sharon making a note, so I know she'll come back to this, but I.
Pavers are. Oh, I could probably get a number, but not right now.
If you, if the name's not readable, do you know the names?
Yes, yes.
You can just reconstruct them as a partial wall in a new space you're going to build, you know?
And that was my thought, is that, right, we would have a wall.
A little, a memory wall where you're going to create that new space out there and ditch the pavers as pavers.
Yeah, because I feel like the salt just.
But you have to be able to recreate the people's donors' names.
And I, and I will share that the papers mean a lot to people. I've had several people, when they find out I'm associated with the library, they let me know my paper's out there and they give me their name, you know, so I, I do think that it's important.
Recreate something.
And, and that's true, it's just not on the ground.
Make it a little more artsy, so there's like an arch or something, they can stand by the papers and take their pictures.
Just something to think about, I'm just throwing it out there as we think about spaces and stuff, because people do ask for that. Can I just throw out that that would be a really great concept to talk to Steve about when we design the outdoor space here at Twelve Mile? Okay, one other thing, we had a comment from, I don't know if I got it, sure. From MLK Day, and this was a comment, just wanted to give very positive feedback from the MLK Day festivities. I attended the Farmington Public School Dance Exhibition Student Panel and my daughter participated in the art contest. We all had a great day spent honoring Dr. King, such a well-rounded event, thank you. Any questions for? I will, I just wanna make sure you don't have any question for me, of the reports or anything else that you need to know, okay? So I have, today, we have Haley Hastings, she's our marketing coordinator, and we have Sona Ovidian. And she's our graphic designer, and if you remember, I mentioned it a couple of times. You need to go that Sona's book, illustration book was the New York Public Library, it's one of New York Public Library's best children's books, right? For twenty twenty-four.
Oh, I think so, yeah.
It was, we're out of the country, you were probably out of the country at that time, yes. So, let's go first, I will share your little. Just go ahead.
I can go.
Okay, let's do. Oh, wait, 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 this is a PowerPoint, hold on.
Are you gonna decide posters and things?
Yes, yep.
The book sale will need a new poster.
Stacy, can you ask Crystal if she can see? Oh, cause I didn't share. But I can't share until I do this. Now you can do that. Alright, got it.
Okay, yeah, my name is Sona Ovidian. I work here part-time as the graphic designer and marketing with Sarah and Haley. So, yeah, I basically just create all the digital and material to help promote library events and services, this includes brochures, social media graphics, event flyers. I also create branding for bigger events and are more permanent programs and services that we have in the library. So this includes things like summer reading that we do annually. The library extravaganza, a seed library is a primary collection that we have. API Fest. And then lastly, I just update library material with our new branding logo colors, that sort of thing. And here are some examples of the work that I do. So a lot of social media graphics, a lot of custom illustrations, flyers, promoting library services. They're very happy, yeah, that's what we're going for, they're very happy. And more on the next slide, there's a better example like a cohesive branding that we do for bigger events at the library. So this happened recently, the library extravaganza, so we have a logo and then a set of illustrations that I create. And then we use everything from, like, everything that I create for social media graphics and stuff like posters, flyers. This time we had an extravaganza map, bingo card. Basically creating a cohesive identity for all of our programs so that they're easier to identify and market to the public.
Hold on, one second, my favorite illustra, oh, now we gotta go back. My favorite illustration is this middle one right here. It's so.
That's my favorite too.
Personifies the library, yes, that's my favorite.
I can bring one.
I have one, the ten things.
I was gonna say, I think some of us got copies. Yes, I have some, several of them, actually.
Yeah, that's so cute.
That's really, really cute.
Yeah, so stuff like this for outreach events too. That was one of the first things that I was looking at, I was looking at all the marketing materials that you had. And when I saw that, I was like, this is amazing, yeah, it was really fun to make.
Well, Sona, thank you so much for the contribution that you've made. I think communication of the efforts here, right, is really important, right, as we engage the community. And, you know, Sarah took us through the rebranding exercise, right? And we rebranded the library, I think that the graphics that you created alongside that have just really caused that whole project to resonate to a higher degree. And I, I get comments from people who say, I love the drawings on the stuff at the library, people really do notice. And so I appreciate the effort that you put into this work. And you really have given us kind of our own look and style, which is your look and style. So we just ask that you allow us to continue to use it forever, no matter how famous you get. Alright, any other questions for Sona?
I think, and we have an idea for, you know, our long-term plan, that we have a designer to help us with some imaging. You know, for enthusiasm.
Yeah, it's exciting.
I just wanna say that I just think Sona is just so incredibly talented and her work has elevated us as a library to the next level. Because, you know, having worked in a number of libraries of different sizes, not many have graphic designers and not many have graphic designers as talented as ours. And she really has created like a signature look for us and a feel, and I just feel like it has elevated us as an organization, you know, for all libraries in Michigan.
Thank you.
So awesome work.
Sona's a graduate of college for creative studies.
I majored in illustration and communication design.
So, so you didn't have to draw a lot of cars?
No, no, that wasn't my thing.
I also just wanna point out the expansion of our communication, right? It was part of the board's understanding that we need different roles in the library today, right? That we might have in the past, and I, I just wanna encourage us to continue thinking in that vein as we go forward about what types of roles we need in the library today and tomorrow. Alright, and then we're gonna turn it over to Haley, which I think we met Haley at an event recently. She was at our MLK, that was the first time that I met Haley, yeah, so Haley, turn it over to you.
There you are, it's just one single slide. So, hello, I'm Haley Hastings, I'm the marketing coordinator here at the library. I joined FCL in late October of last year. So this is, I'm going on four months, I think, now being here, and I'm really enjoying my time. I live in Ypsilanti, I graduated from Eastern back in April of last year. And before that came to Farmington Community Library, I actually worked at the Ann Arbor District Library for about seven years as a desk clerk, part-time. And I just, I love libraries, I, I honestly, when I first joined the Ann Arbor Library, it was kind of, I applied on a whim and it was the best decision I ever made because my understanding of just the benefits that the libraries bring to their communities, it's, I truly appreciate it. So I'm really happy to not only be able to apply my degree and, and work in marketing and communications, what I studied, I get to apply that to a place that I really love. So, just up on the screen, I have some pictures of my cats back home. At the top, I have Delilah and her brother Winston on the bottom left, and then my little heart cat Felix on the right. She is tiny adorable little princess and I love her dearly. And just some other little things about me, some hobbies of mine, I enjoy art, although I'm not as talented as Sona, I do enjoy dabbling in it in my spare time, I like to tinker with computers. I like building different little projects and stuff, I got an associate's in web development before I went for my bachelor's. And so I like to kind of tinker with technology and doing things with code. And I also enjoy reading graphic novels, so that's just some personal stuff about me. Let's talk about going of what I do as a marketing coordinator. I help out in the marketing department with developing copy and public distributing marketing materials throughout the library system. So I've done things like write blog posts for the website. I've helped with scheduling and putting out the social media content and just kind of helping with distributing marketing materials, like the event brochures and also putting together. So those are just some of the things that I do.
To also create the videos for social media.
I do, I have made a couple of videos for social media. Video is still kind of a new thing for me and I'm really liking it so far, so I'm hoping to make lots of cool, fun stuff in the future.
I love that, Haley, and I think it takes really like all of the ways, right? To reach the various audiences that we're trying to reach, and so I really appreciate that. Love the fact that you're interested in computers and coding and all those things, and think about more offerings to the public in those spaces, right? You have that innate insight is awesome, and you have a cat named Felix, and so do I.
Is Felix also a gray cabin or a different?
Tuxedo and it's a boy. Let's see a cat thing in a few.
Diva, she doesn't like change, so.
I was gonna say, yeah, I don't know. Uh, any questions for Haley?
No question, but just expressing thanks for, for your work, you know, as I think about like how we reach people, you know, as a if digital native of like the nineties, you know, having the website was the thing. And that behavior is now really translated to socials, right? If you have, if you have an Insta, that's the thing, right? But maintaining a presence on all of those is important to get there, so thank you.
You made a amazing job on those videos.
Thank you.
I know they snap really enjoy like participating.
You certainly had diversified days, you do something different.
Oh, yeah, that's what I really love about this so far, is being able to do something different each day.
You're definitely extending our brand, and I'm just glad to be associated with each one of you, actually, so thank you all very much. Any other questions for Sona or Haley? Alright, well, seeing none, we won't make you stay with us for the rest of the meeting.
Don't wanna stay.
But if not, we thank you so much for coming and come back again anytime.
I'm just one thing before, not you guys, before I close out, I wanted you to know, I don't think it's on your copy of statistics. But going forward, it will have the whole pickup locker. So, the whole locker pickup in January, there were thirty-nine people using it with seventy-four items checked out. And the mobile app, there were seven hundred and thirty-five gold plates, golds placed on it. And they checked out from the app, one hundred and thirty-three people checked out from the app, interesting.
How they check out with the mobile app?
I bet she was in here the night I tried to use it the first time, thirty minutes, but inside our back cover where our you literally can like check out with the app with your phone.
Oh, you can, I never tried it.
You gotta be in the library to do it, but yes.
You gotta be in the library to do it. So is that statistic gonna be in here next time too? With the lockbox, pickup box.
Yeah, I, I have them on mine, but. So, yeah, I just wanted to curiosity and people still come to the door and bring them.
Really, very few. We have like two regulars at the downtown library. One of them has mobility issues, but here it's really sporadic, I would say maybe a few times a month.
So it means something that we love to keep using.
I think the people that use it find it very helpful to them because it is a lot of people that have mobility issues and have difficulty parking their car and walking all the way across the parking lot. Especially in the winter months. I think, you know, it's one of those things that doesn't get used a whole lot, but the people who do use it appreciate it. I don't see any reason to discontinue it, because it doesn't seem like it's a burden to stand.
We used to before, we officially did it. To pay for that, before, for the ability for them to call in to the library. I don't think we have that anymore.
I, I don't, I don't think they do, do they? I think people just call that.
They just call and say, yeah.
But because I think they're like contract, because they're. And it wasn't used enough.
To renew the contract.
To renew the contract, but we weren't gonna, we weren't gonna stop that service because it was so few people, just call us.
I wasn't aware that you stopped.
Yeah, I just remember seeing the bill.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's, it's.
So just a point of clarity, the, the service is continued, but the, the contract with that.
Like, it was an app that they could call or text in to say I'm here, and, yeah.
Now they just call our.
Yeah, so it started with COVID, but that's all we were doing.
And to be honest, knowing the patrons that use the service now, none of them would be using the app even if we had.
They're much more comfortable just calling. Gonna say that they're elderly and have short life spans.
It's a tech learning curve for about.
That will bring us to unfinished business, and under unfinished business, we have the matter of our tax captures. I am glad to announce that I think between Sharon and I, we have worked with Anne and we've got a draft back for the DDA. We have one addition we're gonna make to that, and I think you'll have that back here to the board for approval next, but Sharon, I'll turn it over to you to see if there are any other thoughts or comments around tax captures.
No, one of, one of my generic comments was is that in the provision that they should give us some feedback that, that, and I think, and I found out they have a board of directors, because I read all of the information. And I think that she's very open, that they will come in if we just request it, and that we should get a little bit more engaged, that hi, the library here. And I think with the language that's in there by just having her come tonight, I think that probably is sufficient. But I did have one other question is, the percentage that we give them, is that a fix, like five percent, two percent of that, what is that, is that number fixed? Does it, does it vary each, like, so from year one, they get a certain percentage of our, they get to capture. And does it, does it vary each like so from year one, they get a certain percentage of our, to, they get to capture. How does that figure change for the next year?
And Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the percentage is stable, but the amount varies.
That's because.
Based on the valuations.
But in the document, it doesn't say what the percentage is. It should say the fixed percentage of your caption is point oh one percent or whatever it is. Should it say that in there?
I don't know if we can specify the percentage.
Or by saying the existing percentage will be the same based in the next year.
So you have to go to the auditing page and it shows you how they exactly figure that out and the, and so.
And, uh, and then that calculation is what causes it to vary. So I think maybe that's something we can take back to Anne.
I, uh, my other issue I think is, uh, resolved, but I had enough satisfaction that they will report to us anytime we ask them to. But the one about, should you say specifically, you're getting such a percentage for the continuance of this contract each year? It, now it just says according to what the board, what the document says, it did, it's kind of nebulous, but I, I think it should be more specific. And I don't know the numbers.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the language that's in there is probably based on the full capture that would be allowed, right? Um, and so there may be some hesitation to indicate a, a, a percentage, right? Because if that could fall out of areas with the calculation that actually occurs every year.
And maybe that, maybe it has to be more generic word, but I need to be reassured that it's not being recalculated um, in some way that we didn't recognize and we let them do that.
So maybe we say per the schedule, right? The calculation schedule that is.
Um, and they have a simple answer to it.
Yeah. Okay, I've, I've got that feedback, um, that makes sense to me and we'll take that back to Anne. And, um, I'm sure she'll give us something that'll meet that requirement.
But other than that, I thought everything was, uh, just like we asked.
So you also need one big grant.
Do, um, and Anne wants to do a little more, uh, thinking about that one. Um, I'm gonna take the information you shared with me and the information Kelly has shared and kind of send that her way. And, um, I'm hopeful that we'll also have that agreement for the marketing as well, so we can close both out. All right, thank you, Sharon. That will bring us to subcommittee updates. So first, we have the finance committee. Anything from the finance committee, Kathy?
Um, well, the interest earned in January twenty twenty-five was forty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars and forty cents. The total month end balance was eleven million two hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred nine dollars and seventy-three cents. The daily yield on January first was four point five seven zero percent. And it was four point five zero three two percent on January two. I had a question about possibly moving this information up to instead of having it come to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. Uh, since you're proud of that. Anything else from the finance committee? All right. Uh.
Can you approve that without a quorum?
Well, there's nothing to approve there. Uh, she was just kind of reporting out, so. Uh, now the finance, you know, bills and all of that will come back to us next month and we'll have to do both months. Uh, so Sharon, we'll come to you for facilities. Do we have any update from the facilities committee?
Sure, as much as you'd like. I'm gonna go first to the, to the non, um, on ring plan and to the digital sign. And we talked about the digital sign. Um, it's, uh, it's the same quote, it's the same price, forty-seven, seven. And, uh, either checked, it's about somewhere in five thousand dollar range to get the electricity or whatever you need for the sign. So, uh, the instruction was to spend under fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, so I don't know if that needs to, uh, resolution move forward. Uh, and we don't have enough people here, so we'll put that on the agenda for next time.
We decide to make this color strip and this, it's gonna be great. Before we got that sample.
Yes, yes. Um, so, okay, that'll be next time, um, the elevator had to be modernized, um. And they're getting an RFP and that is in the old section of Farmington. That elevator is.
Did I have a typo in there? Sorry.
Okay, so in the old section of Farmington, and I don't quite know where the elevator is, but I assume it.
It's when you walk in the back door, it's right there.
It's right there.
So it's the only elevator.
It's the only. Yeah, so he's working on RFP for that. Um, then he also is working on the LED lights and thank you for taking that minute so detailed. And the electric company, he was getting a call from, they decided they didn't want the job. So he's back to square one and, uh, somebody had a price fifty-two thousand to do a nonfictioning, but only and it shows way too high. So he's out back in the marketplace, the LED lights. The charging station Jim brought up, he had a discussion that I think with Sarah and someone else about the electric charging station. Um, and about the cost that, and where would you put it? Um, so he, he found out that um, uh, the, the building, when you have changed the size of the building, um, and that Sherry also, um, they've talked to a few companies and so they attended webinar on it, um. It's got a lot, a lot more discussion, uh, about the charging stations. And we talked a lot about the MBD ones across the street. Um, this is an MBD, yeah, that they're always full and there's always people in line, like tonight, there were two cars waiting for each one. Um, and I, Jim and I were having a discussion, we said that of certainly that you need to charge something for people to pay for our maintenance. If you put them in the parking lot, pay for our maintenance. And second, you have to put them to someplace where there are people waiting for charging, don't disrupt the flow of the, of the patrons, because it's not for all the patrons, it's a specific group. So that was kind of this general discussion so far. I mean, it's not a motion idea like that.
Very nice. Very nice, uh, I'm, she did a grant. She did not do the grant, she, the state of Michigan did the grant for the libraries that were interested. But were in line, certainly that they're still.
Right, and that comes from the infrastructure. So that was the discussion about that. Um, we also had the type of the roof covering for the locker boxes. And, um, I just brought, a lockbox is cost twenty-eight thousand? Okay, twenty-eight thousand, and it's gonna cost, um, seventy-five hundred to put a roof over it now. Because when they put the plastic, what they tried and it still gets rain and snow on it anyway. And, um, I just point this out as example because I think we paid two thousand dollars for the next three years to maintain the box, the boxes. It's a, you know, contract to make sure they work and they open up and they close. So the initial project then, you have to add seventy-five hundred for the roof and two thousand maintenance each year. And I just pointed out as a good example is we're looking at the long-range planning that we say, okay, this costs five thousand to fix this, this part of the building. But it costs five thousand plus the little things that we didn't anticipate. Um, and, and the continuing future expense. Yeah, you, so it's not that additional con- construction process. And this is a good example, it's real simple. We said, oh, these boxes are beautiful, they're great, big one vendors. And then we have, you know, the issue with the roof. Um, so, um, we really have to build into the budget. Um, maintenance, future maintenance and future oopsies, the fix. Our next meeting, um, the staff has some kind of meeting, we had to move it up till Monday, March the third. I'll get back to that, to the heavy stuff. Um, so for Steve came and he was helping us doing some long-range planning, he gave a little chart for us. And the chart basically is you start with your RFP, you do space utilization, you decide project phasing. And then you try to get a CM proposal and a cost estimate. So it, this is the steps that you have to take. So he did a nice job doing that, um, aligning the timeline, uh, what he's showing the master plan, he, uh, he has several questions, like the questions you asked about. Well, if the bathroom takes up, uh, is renovated, what happens to some offices behind it? And he wanted to encourage, uh, the fact that the architects have put in a box. And the box isn't the size of the bathroom. So the boxes, the boxes mean something's going there, but may not exactly what the concern is. And I know Kathy, you and I looked at, we're concerned about the staff's offices. And, and so that was one of his responses. The boxes are just that, they're boxes. That doesn't mean that's what's gonna be. Yeah, yeah, you can, um, and so he recommended you work the construction manager. Our problem would be is we decided it's better to do it um, phased out, maybe four phases. Take the, and we've all talked about taking the hanging fruit first. Um, and those items, um, are gonna be the two bathrooms, the reading the little rooms down in the corner, the study rooms and, um, what's the next one, study rooms, the two bathrooms.
Outside space, you know, the outside space.
Oh, the outside spaces.
And maybe the parking lot.
Oh, the parking lot was the next contender.
Did I, I sent you the email that he sent you with all the costs?
Yes, yes, yeah. Um, yeah, and so he, he went through and he put down, they went back and doing those items, did some cost analysis. And this is how much it would be. And you did send him the email.
Oh, it's in your, it's in your packets. Like, it, like, that can be like, maybe if we still had money, that added on to it.
Yeah, it's, it would be the next one in the list. Because that's a safety feature.
One in the front.
Yeah, where the people have to go back and forth. That's dangerous, sorry, they're going this way and that way. So, um, Steve said the problem with getting a construction manager when you phase out the projects like that, um, which is fine to do, and he says it's a good idea. The problem is the construction managers, they want a big job. They want to know that they're gonna get a ten million dollar job. They want the big job. They don't want to just do phase one. They want to make sure they're doing a whole job, so some of the big contractors won't take the job. And we managed to find with the roof, remember, they only got one quote to do our book. Um, one quote that was reasonable, um, so. Anyway, he saw his concern and he was gonna talk to his favorite, whoever, somebody that he likes to look and see if they would be interested in knowing that they would get their whole project, but not in the first two years.
They're a local company down in Farmington. They have to work with FBS. And they did, um, he did talk to them and they said that they potentially would be interested in knowing that it does have to go up for an RFP.
So, um, we're meeting before the next board meeting again. And the idea was is that to bring to the board that we're gonna try for a ten-year plan, phasing plan, and those are the first things to try. Um, and see, you know, look where our money is, where we're gonna get the money from to do those parts, um. And, uh, you know, starting getting the project moving, you know, uh, the outdoor spaces could possibly be done by the summer, it'll be some good PR. We have our graphic artists now and you can put happy kids up in graphic space. And what else, um, then you have to look in the future. Can you fund it by your monies coming in or do you need to get some other source of funding? You have two villages to draw from, um, and it, you just have to do piece by piece. But you, I think the one thing you have to be careful on long-term like this ten-year plan is that if you do something like, I know Kathy's concerned, it's about the, the restrooms here in this building. If you do something and fix those restrooms and you really are disruptive of something else. Now remember, you're not fixing the area that was disrupted because they weren't on the first phase. So you have to be really careful, especially with staff, you know, you know, input. That if you're making something and it's disruptive and it's gonna stay disruptive for a while. That has to kind of be a decision made and kind of together with the staff, we're gonna live with the disruption. That, like, off the spaces, it could be a big disruption. Um, so I, I just, I think if pregnant, get going, be cognizant of if something doesn't go as planned really fast, what have we disrupted? Um, so.
Plans for those here.
Well, I think if, if you have the, uh, one, one or have in this discussion. Uh, you know, people are, I think, on the whole, very reasonable, provided that they've been sufficiently communicated with. So I, this makes me wonder both for employees as well as general public, you know, given that once these timelines become more firm and established, like, how are we communicating these, like, with, with our marketing team and, and maybe there's even il- an illustration that she can just get relative to, to the timeline, but how, what is, what we are approached to communicating this to the public and to employees.
And people want to know, like, they want to be part of the, you know, the process. Not like, well, why is that, why is that big sheet of, you know, paper on the wall? We haven't, you know, there doesn't seem to be any action, you know? So, no, it's a good point.
So I'm wondering if if they do those bathrooms, you know, by the surface, where are the shelves for the new books and all of those, four sets or three sets shown? And that has to be.
That would be part of the conversation when we're getting into the N D three. And that, that would be part of it with the staff conversation too, because their suggestions might be, you know.
Would be a temporary.
Yeah, something. But since they're on, they're hands on it there every day, their, their suggestion may be. The one they could live on. Um, so, um, I think we had a pretty long, extensive meeting, Julie, did you have anything that you, I didn't mention that on the action?
I think it was. I think it was everything.
Yeah.
Stick at the next meeting, though, you need to come up with the approval of that first phase of plans. Projects.
Right, to the board, yes.
For that, yeah, well, yeah, like, so the board needs to make a decision, are you okay with these projects that the facilities committee has identified? So that they can look forward with the rest.
Yeah, I have a motion for the board to, you know.
Plant Brown is also putting together something that will tell us about monies. Right, right, and I gave her these figures on here so she could, yeah, they could build it in.
Yes, you're gonna have to know which account that you want to draw from. I think that's just, I think it's all for the facilities. I, I want to say this, we left our meeting, the facilities meeting, and I, 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 I don't know, four thirty, whatever. And so I go to my next meeting and I come six or five, and Steve is at the meeting. Cause I run the children, children with family foundation house, and he is somebody that never came to the meeting, he's a liaison. And all of a sudden he's there and I said, oh, Parker, the joint basis. See, but in this committee, she goes, he never comes. So I just, I'm shocked, you know, you don't expect to see somebody there. But a liaison is optional, whether they come or not come. He's not a mem- a voting member of the committees. He was surprised too. So, it's a little funny story. Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, I think we might start calling you all the hardest working committee. Uh, really appreciate all of the details. Um, the only ask I have around the plan, uh, if there is to be a plan submitted, uh, to the board next month for approval. If we can somehow maybe get that in front of the trustees before the meeting, just so they have a chance to kind of digest it. I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah.
Steve, because we're meeting on Monday, you know, there's no problem.
All right, that will bring us to the personnel committee. Uh, DeHara is not here, but I am happy to report that the personnel committee, uh, did meet with the director in January. Um, and we had a nice conversation, I think, around, um, some reflection over the last year and some forward-thinking um, pieces moving into this year. And, um, so I think we're well-aligned. And, um, yeah. Any comments from your side about the meeting?
That's no problem. It was a good food.
All right, and we thank, uh, Ms. Brown for, uh, extending the invitation to the Hero River Club for the meetings. Thank you. All right, that will bring us to new business and we have several items listed under new business. Um, we will not be taking any action because, uh, we don't have a quorum tonight. Kelly, do you want to expound on any of these items or do you want to reserve until next month?
So, the minimum wage motion. You have to file state of Michigan anyway. Right, so, uh, you know, it's gonna be whatever they decide. I didn't see that they, it has now moved. It's moved, it today, it moved somewhere. Um, it's, it's to the whole committee now, which means basically third reading, so with no amendments, so I don't know what that means. Um, so hopefully within the next few days or by next week. It happened until February twenty-first. So, um, so whatever it is at that time is what it. So um, so whatever it is at that time is what it's going to be, right? And then the programming policy. We drive that, I gave you a copy, like I said, I wasn't looking for uh a motion today, I was gonna give you time to digest it, I just wanted to, if you had any. Sharon came back with a couple of questions and I answered them and I don't know. So it's been.
I think, I do think my question to Kelly had been. The policy, as she explained to me, is for programs that the the library sponsors or co-sponsors. Right, so this young lady who spoke tonight, but she had an acquaintance that she would like to recommend to be a speaker. Would not be a a library sponsor if they just rented your, got a room here and you can speak.
Yeah, correct.
But he's not under the policies of the library, but the general public wouldn't know that when they saw the advertisement for the lecture.
If they rent, if they reserve a space, we don't advertise.
But they might advertise it. So, but I'm with the feedback, I'm just saying the feedback will come back to the library because the general public doesn't know, they saw that a program was here. So you would be then saying, well, you're presenting this program that wasn't appropriate, and you see, but it was not our program.
But the only thing they're allowed to put on there is the location, if they put the li- they're not to say, and they I mean, they have to put the location on, so like it says right in the meeting room policy, if you're advertising your program, the only thing you can do is put the location of the library where.
I I'm just looking at, you might get some negative.
I mean, I can definitely see. You know, if someone doesn't have appreciation for that detail, they would have a a, the misunderstanding that the the library is promoting.
It would result in a blow up.
The only thing you really could do potentially to avoid that is to add something to the room policy that might require a disclaimer. If you, if you publicize the event, like you you must say that the event is not sponsored by the Farmington Library. That could be approached to it, that you could explore, Kelly, and come back.
Could also add to the meeting room policy and maybe it's in there, I haven't read it in a while, but um, just that um you know, kind of like our disclaimer. Um, that's in the programming policy that just because a program takes place here, the library is being the library, the board, or the staff endorse the views expressed.
Like they do in all the ads on TV.
Oh, I I don't, I have to go back.
It says that, I mean, look at what we require them to put on their publicizing materials.
I I don't think I'd be overly cautious that things come up and all of a sudden they weren't a tight situation.
No, I think that's spot on considering um, the current circumstances. All right, um, with that being said, we will revisit all of the items in the new business next month.
We have new business?
Yes. Uh, libraries.
Oh, that was, that wasn't me, that was kidding. I'm gonna do that.
Do we have any correspondence? Of correspondence, do we have any public comments?
I'd like to publicly comment if I could. So I was thinking about, well, when Shannon was talking about the facilities for this um, kind of report rather. And how Kelly had talked to the friends for it about, I mean, her friends wouldn't necessarily wanna raise money for any bathroom. But I gotta tell you. Happen underpants is hugely popular. And I think that the idea that you could get your name put on a plaque that would go up. A new bathroom would absolutely be hilarious and and we might even be able to do that kind of thing as well. So I don't want you to think that anything is off the table when it comes to this kind of stuff. Because uh, there are a lot of people who would would really love to contribute and they contribute in a way that is not necessarily going to be considered, you know, mainstream in any regard. So I I just think that when um, Kate was talking about all the grants that Sherry just gathered one, right, Sherry just gathered one, but I I do think that if they're matching things.
Yeah, so I was at West Bloomfield, and and I told you, it's real west Bloomfield last week, and you tell it, you gotta go browse library. So every study room had a name placard. So donor and sponsorship. So, like.
That might, that might help with uh, some of the the maintenance fees for things, like. It, it wouldn't be great to turn everything over to donations, but because there is sort of a will to do something that's that's public and uh, I mean, look upon these works, you might be, and despair doesn't really hold a lot of water when, you know, you might have a plaque that lasts for a hundred years, so.
There's six study rooms like that wanna be in this corner, right, so it's thirty five thousand, thirty thousand dollars, right?
But, but you don't know to, you know, like, every chair in the theater, some years have someone's name on it. You go into the aquarium at the Bell Hall Aquarium, and the fish tank was empty five years ago. Empty, and it said, you can fill this aquarium for ten thousand dollars. And you know what, the people went by and it's the oldest aquarium in the United States, they got every one of those filled. But when they put the little signs up, so it's just to being clever. And people would like to see their name a little bit, especially at their favorite place in the library, the cafe. Right, you know, the back there, sitting by the fire.
Well, yeah, I I think that person that's kind of quirky and wants to make a statement, right? They're gonna be the person that wants to come through with that.
I said I'm a swing, I want my name on a swing. No, it's not Mason's Park, they had a swing town. How much I have to give a five on my name on a swing?
Everybody, so everybody's gonna sit, they're gonna sit their butts on your knees.
And you concluded with the Republican. Trying to take these opious notes. Um, I do like this though, so Kathy, uh, maybe as the finance committee. Maybe what we can do along with the facilities committee is to kind of think about how we monetize through the project. Put some thought around what are the naming opportunities, what are the donation opportunities? And then work with the staff to put together some plans and the friends around how we communicate that out, how we let people know to Stephen's point. Hey, these projects are about to launch, we're about to go on this journey to improve your library, so I think there's a whole plan there.
A long term plan.
Can you crowdsource us a public?
Well. I think we have options, right, because we can do, we can't do through her.
Right, right, okay.
Well, everybody behind me. Oh, straight, invisible person.
I mean, because, you know, Farmington was very successful with that.
And um. All right, so uh, did you have uh, any more public comment? No, okay.
Oh, wait, Sharon.
I have a comment. Um, and this is actually for um, Kelly.
Point of information, is this public comment now or trustee comment? Trustee comment.
Trustee comment is, you see that the county Wayne libraries were um, either overfunded or underfunded on their penal fines? Um, and we're we're an open county. But there's no reason that you'd rather be open funding Wayne County, but they hadn't seen the article printed in the first page. But someone, uh, like La Bonia, somebody owes, they've been overpaid a couple hundred thousand dollars.
A lot of them have been. And so there was a renovation, one library renovation project.
It would be hard to, it would be hard to find it if you're in the library, because you wouldn't quite know what to, you're expecting from the penal. From the fines.
Validate what you're supposed to be.
Yeah, it is rigorous what you have, so I know it's just in the paper today.
Well, that that, and I saw that. It made me wonder what extent is that, or is that not present here in Open County?
You don't know, but ours is the same, it's been the same for how many years? Do you know what I mean? And so like, I think there was some variances and they didn't catch, they're like, oh, look, I got more money.
Well, even the story, it it appeared as though, or at least the 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 media made it appear as though that was a result of like staffing changes and a lack of filling.
So the library of Michigan. Yeah, the library of Michigan is the one that distributes that, those funds out, and they're the ones that gives the rate to the county. So.
And some of the libraries, like La Bonia, they they are on they get their money from the city, they're part of the city, so they might not even like see it because the city gives them the money.
All right, they're not receiving it directly.
You don't have a direct village like we do. La Bonia is part of the city, and maybe some of those other libraries are part of the city, so.
But it just made me wonder, to what extent does this need to be investigated within Open County? Like if this is a thing that happens, or has the potentiality that has it? I think that's the thing, I don't know that it's ever, has it ever happened, right?
No, it's never happened.
And so um, it brings up some things to think about. For us, I think, from a percentage of the budget, it's so low that it's not necessarily meaningful, but for a lot of libraries, it is.
Well, yeah, because the smaller libraries, yeah. Some of those smaller libraries, I felt so bad for them, I think, it's, yeah, they gotta.
They're depending on that.
They're depending on it, now they gotta pay it back. And I'm thinking, you know what, this is your fault, like, what, why do I need to pay the money back, you know? It's possible that the library of Michigan initiate, like now, make of this, is going to initiate like an audit and investigation across the board, just to make sure this. Well, they did, they certainly did for Wayne County, because the library of Michigan has been on this from the get go since they found out that this was and they're the ones, so they've been having meetings, library of Michigan has been having meetings with Wayne County and that kind of stuff, so they are investigating that, and my guess is then the library of Michigan will expand that out a little bit to the other. So I just wonder if it's gonna be like, um, they're going to try to some correct themselves so that even necessarily not to.
Well, I think. I mean, in either event, I think um, just understanding from them kind of what the after action is, like kind of a root cause, what happened, so people understand. And then like, what are the safeguards that the library take going forward? Or the county government, wherever the misalignment happened. Um, and also understanding how you can audit it, like, right, how can we audit it if we needed to? What's the source documentation, like how do you determine how much you should be getting, right? Oh, I think, yeah, I think those are important questions to know, so we'll kind of stay tuned. Um, thanks for bringing it up, Sharon, I actually missed that article, so I was not aware of that, so. Any other trustee comment? Let me pull out my notes here. All right, uh, seeing nothing further on the agenda, I want to thank everybody uh, for your patience tonight, you're real blessed. Participation as usual, and we can consider ourselves adjourned.